Second, 2014. Would you all please rise for brief invocation and be filed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight, as we meet in our regular session, we are ever mindful that we are approaching the fall season and that we are about to, as a community, experience the wonder of the many colors that Mother Nature showers upon our town. And we are thankful for all the good efforts that have been done over the many generations to make Batavia such a community of such grandeur and outstanding appearance with all the trees and bushes and foliage that have been planted by former generations and our current generation. And we are thankful for all the continued good efforts that go forward in our community to continue on that grand tradition. Tonight, as always, we want to remember those from our community who are serving in defense of our liberties on foreign soil, and we just ask that a special blessing be showered upon them, along with all those from our country who are serving, and that a special offering of guidance and blessing be showered on each and every one of them. Tonight, we ask for direction and guidance as we act upon the affairs of business on our agenda, just knowing that each and every member of the City Council is here tonight to do what they feel in their own heart and mind will be in the best interest of the future of our community. We ask for all these blessings and understandings. Amen. Alderman Serrone, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the divide of the United States of America into a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ask the City Clerk to please call the roll.
Brown?
Here.
Clark?
Here.
Atack?
Here.
Stark?
Here.
Chantet?
Here.
Wolf?
Here.
O'Brien?
Here.
Callahan?
Here.
Homan?
Here.
Sam?
Here.
Vassiliyan?
Here.
Serrone?
Here.
McFadden?
Here.
Brown?
Here.
Clark?
Here.
Atack?
Aye.
Motion for the amendment to the agenda is approved. Thirteen yes, no nos, one missing. Anything else? We have to read, want to present all these. Alderman Stark, you got to...
I have a long list to read tonight. The consent agenda for Tuesday, September 2, 2014 reads as follows: "We accept in place on file (a) the Joint Committee of the Home Minutes for July 8th, August 5th, August 12, 2014; (b) the July financials. The following approvals: Letter C, August 29, 2014 payroll in the amount of $719,842.82; D, the accounts payable check register in the amount of $990,420.23; E, the City Council minutes for August 4, 2014; F, which is now Resolution 14-104-R declaring 10 MVA substation transformer to be surplus property and authorizing the sale thereof, that came out of the Public Utilities J-Cow meeting on 8/26/14 at a vote of 12 to 0; Ordinance 1451, changing the name of Limestone Drive in Tanglewood Hills subdivision Unit 2, that came out of Community Development on 8/19/14 at vote of 10 to 0; Resolution 1499-R, accepting easement for the Batavia Avenue parking lot 113 South Batavia Avenue, that came out of Community Development at 10 to 0; Resolution 14109-R, Resolution for Maintenance of Streets and Highways by Municipality under the Illinois Highway Code, came out of Community Services with a vote of 12 to 0; Resolution 1484-R, authorizing execution of a contract for the 2014 sidewalk and curb replacement program with G&amp;M Cement Construction for $128,519, City Services, 12 to 0 vote; Resolution 14107-R, authorizing execution of a contract for the 2014 Donovan Bridge Repair Project with Silers Incorporated for $49,503.28, City Services, 12 to 0 vote; Resolution 14110-R, authorizing execution of the agreement for the 2014 Street Program Material Testing with S-T-A-T-E Testing LLC in the amount of $24,862, which came out of City Services with 12 to 0 vote; Resolution 14114-R, authorizing execution of a services agreement for software upgrade project with New World Systems, which came out of Government Services with a 12 to 0 vote; Resolution 14106-R, approving the proposal from Presidio Network Solutions for an amount not to exceed $60,138.45, which was Government Services, 12 to 0 vote. And that's all I have for the consent agenda. Will someone make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Some move. Move by Alderman Chantet, seconded by Alderman McFadden. Any discussion on the consent agenda as presented? Kirk call the roll.
Chantet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Homan?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Vassiliyan?
Aye.
Serrone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Atack?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Motion's approved. Thirteen yes, no nos. Motion's approved. Okay, moving then to item number six, our matters from the public for items not on the agenda. Do we have anybody this evening? Okay, moving to item number seven, the Batavia Chamber of Commerce report. Holly?
Hello, Mayor. City Council members, thank you for giving me some time today. Just a couple of things I wanted to report to you. We had two very successful ribbon cuttings, which always means good things for our community. We had Acosta's Consignment this past Saturday, and also Music Matters School in Batavia. So, we welcome them to Batavia, and hopefully they will become members of the Chamber of Commerce here in any day now. Also, met with a very interesting auto dealership called Mike 200,000 Miles out at the North Aurora Auto Mall. They applied for membership and just waiting for payment from them now, but they have an interesting concept. It's a used car dealership that offers a 200,000-mile warranty on all of their cars, and also a 36,000-mile warranty, or I'm sorry, for maintenance and repair. So, pretty cool little concept over there, and encourage you to think of them when you're thinking of your next car. We have just completed our annual board retreat for the Batavia Chamber of Commerce. We have a 15-member Board of Directors that serve us very willingly and with great gusto, and I really appreciate all of the effort they put in, including Mr. Bill McGrath, who serves as the City Representative on our Board of Directors, and we welcome him for another year with us. Some facts that I had to draw out before I gave my presentation to our board. One is that our longest-standing member of the Batavia Chamber is Shaw Media, and they've been a member since 1955. So, pretty cool little tidbit of information. We have 287 members that represent 6,200 employees in this community. So, really cool information that I was able to come up with, so wanted to share that with you tonight. Other than that, we just have a lot coming up in the fall, and a lot of great strategic plan that we came up with to really grow the Chamber in many ways, whether that be through new reorganization of our staff. So, I've extended an offer and have a new member relations specialist that will be coming on in mid-September, and also a sales representative. So, look for great new events, and hopefully a lot of growth from the Chamber over the next year.
Any questions of Holly tonight? Thank you for all your continued great efforts.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, item eight, Main Street. Joy, did you have anything tonight?
That's me.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I'll do it.
You told me that, too.
I did. That's okay.
Jamie?
All right. The Main Street Minute for July and August is actually going to be covered over all of our stuff, so there's a ton of stuff, so get ready. We had 173 Main Street volunteers donate 411 hours for plannings, meetings, programs, and events. As part of our ongoing retention meetings, Main Street met with four businesses in both July and August to learn about their businesses and how to help them grow. Just this past weekend, and I know some of you were there, we celebrated our annual block party right in downtown, right at Peg Bond. We had an awesome turnout again. We think we probably bypassed the 4,000 that we had last year, which is excellent. It was a super hot sunny day. Lots of people came out for, we had the car show on River Street again, we had the pie bake-off, we had great music from local artists, Pat Moynihan and Gregory Hyde, and everybody really enjoyed both of those. Great tastings from our restaurants and a good selection of beverages. If you haven't been to our farmer's market yet, you can come out to River Street on Saturdays from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m., have some breakfast, listen to music, and get your fresh produce for the week. It's live and thriving, that's for sure. And I know most of the City Council members have been out there, and so many of our people in town and around town and other towns. Looking ahead, Friday through Sunday, September 12th and 14th, the Batavia Park District through the Depot Museum is hosting the Civil War encampment with a demonstration and recreation of history on the River Walk. This is the second annual, and it was definitely a great thing to come check out for all ages. Friday through Sunday, September 19th through 21st, we are celebrating our 10th anniversary of Art in Your Eye Festival, and it is definitely going to be bigger and better than ever. So, we have our fine art show out at Peg Bond. We have our City Hall exhibit, which is local artists here in City Hall. We'll have live music both during the day and at night. We'll have a craft beer tent from Penrose. We'll have tri-it tents with Water Street Studios where you can throw clay and mold clay with your hands, and all different kinds of stuff, so make sure you come out. Let's see. Oh, and something super special. Print Lab, who is Water Street's partner in St. Charles, will be doing live screen printing demonstrations where you can purchase a canvas bag or T-shirt and choose one-of-a-kind designs by post artist Chris Hodge. And you guys all have this awesome little postcard, so he designed some special artwork that they can have printed right there on the bags and the T-shirts, or you can bring your own T-shirt. Saturday, September 27, Water Street Studios is hosting their bold fundraiser Ensemble, which is a fashion runway show, gallery exhibition, performers, and live auction, and an after-show DJ dance party. Tickets are on sale now, and you can get them at waterstreetstudios.com. Sunday, September 28, from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. is our annual house walk, which tickets pre-sale are $25 and day-of are $30. This year, you get to tour five homes. There is a rehab Georgian in Tanglewood, rescued 1928 red brick home that was empty for 12 years over on McKee that I'm sure many people watched get rehabbed, so it'll be exciting to tour that one, 1,900 clapboard with updates, a major kitchen remodel from the 1970s, and a Frank Lloyd Wright-designed home from 1906. All of these wonderful events could not happen without the help of our dedicated volunteers and team members at Batavia Main Street. So, if anybody is interested in volunteering for Art in Your Eye, where we have information and check-in areas where we need lots and lots of volunteers, you can contact us. Volunteers this year get an awesome Art in Your Eye T-shirt. You get an Art in Your Eye poster, and you also get an invitation to the VIP Artist Party on Saturday night, which will all make your two-hour commitment well worth it. If you're interested in architecture, history, and design, we are looking for docents for the house walk to help with two-hour shifts at the homes. Tickets, if you volunteer, are only $10 instead of the $25, and you still have plenty of time to go on the house walk. We actually have sign-up sheets here tonight. You can talk to Joy or myself. And really, just we're so lucky to have a talented community here. If you are interested in getting more involved with Batavia Main Street, you can contact us at www.downtownbatavia.com or 630-761-3528. Thanks.
Any questions of Main Street tonight? Again, thanks to all that Main Street does in promoting Batavia. I think the last few weeks from both organizations has been a tried and true test of all the great things that both of you are capable of, and really appreciate all the good efforts to help continue to make Batavia shine. All right. The next thing before we go on to other presentations is that, as you all remembered, our last City Council meeting, Alderman Sparks indicated that because of his move to North Aurora, he was going to have to submit his resignation as First Ward Alderman. And so, this past week, he did forward his resignation to me, and I'll just read it here very quickly. It says, "Dear Mayor Shalke, please accept this letter as my formal resignation as First Ward Alderman for the Batavia City Council. I have great pride, I've taken great pride in serving the First Ward and being part of the City Council. I will truly miss being part of the City Council and the continued good efforts that are taking place. Thank you all for all your cooperation and support during my time with you. Sincerely, Garen Sparks, First Ward Alderman, City of Batavia." So, I guess I'll just entertain a motion to accept this and place it on file?
Some move.
Motion by Alderman Atack, seconded by Alderman Wolf. Kirk, take a roll, I guess.
Atack?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chantet?
Aye.
Wolf?
No.
O'Brien?
No.
Callahan?
Right.
Homan?
Right.
Sam?
Aye.
Vassiliyan?
Aye.
Serrone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
No.
Clark?
No.
The vote was nine to four, but legally, we have no other choice because he's already given me his new address in North Aurora. If you want to go, I have his address and his phone number if any of you need it. So, he's not with us anymore. So, let's get on with business then, and let me announce that, obviously, the way this works, we have a vacancy in the City Council, and we have to follow state law in doing this. And under state law, when you resign during your term of office, your successor is appointed by the City Council and only serves until the next regular election. Well, in the case of Alderman Sparks, his term was due to be up next April anyway, so the person that will be appointed will serve from the time we appoint them until they make a decision whether they want to run for the election. Maybe somebody else will run, too, and then they would be elected to a full term next April would be how this, would be kind of a short term for whoever gets it. I look back as to how we've done this in the past, and normally, when we have a resignation, we traditionally take three to four weeks, and we ask that anybody in that ward, they have to live in the First Ward, have to be of legal voting age, and have to have lived in the ward, I believe, a year. So, that's, anybody that meets those qualifications can submit an application, or let's call it a resume. And I would invite, starting today, anybody that is interested to, you know, call or send me down a resume. We will collect all the resumes. Everyone that is submitted will be copied and forwarded to all the members of the City Council, so you will all get a chance to, and we'll put a deadline on it at the end of September, which would be the 30th. So, that'll give everybody the rest of the month to talk to their neighbors or friends, or do whatever they want to do. Submit the resume to us by the 30th. Then, on the 30th, when we get them all, they will be sent to or given to all the city members of the City Council. And my plan would be, then, that on the J-Cow meeting that is scheduled for the next night, I guess it would be the, no, wait a minute, it would be the 7th, the J-Cow meeting on the 7th, we will have a presentation. We invite each one of the candidates down, and they'll address the City Council. You'll be able to ask them any questions. Following that exercise, we will go through what we've done before. We will let the City Council make the selection based on who you think would be the best person to represent the ward and that you would work with. So, all the 13 of you will have the final decision as to who the person is that gets appointed. Now, the good news on this is I've already heard from three people that tell me that they're interested, and so I've invited them to submit resumes to me. I haven't gotten really a formal resume. I've just gotten a couple called. One has sent an email, said he was interested. So, we do have three out there that live in the First Ward that have said that they are interested. So, I'm assuming and hopeful, nothing else, we'll contact the press, because I don't know if we even have any press with us here at the moment, to get the word out that this is available to the First Ward residents. And again, the deadlines are the 30th, and then we will make the J-Cow meeting on October 7. So, that's what the schedule would be. Anybody got any comments or questions on that, so you all understand how that would go? All right.
I'd just like to say, in regards to Garen, when I first got on almost six years ago, Garen's been a role model from that time. I believe he's to be a stellar representative of the First Ward and the city as a whole. He was always prepared, always did the reading, always prepared for any vote, and he has definitely become a dear friend, and he'll be sorely missed on this council.
Let me just say, on that regard, I talked to him today, and he's going to be available at the next City Council meeting. He's going to be free. He said he'll come down to the meeting, and I told him I would prepare a proclamation that we would pass, as we've done with, you know, when somebody goes off the City Council in normal course of events. And so, I'll probably, we'll read it and ask you to pass that on the 15th, and then he will be here. And then, if anybody has any other comments you'd like to make about him, we'll plan to do that at the next City Council meeting on the 15th.
And I just wanted to clarify. In the past, we've had the presentation at the committee meeting, and then voted in executive session at the next City Council meeting. Are we still doing that?
No, I think we will, as long as, hopefully, if we're all here at the J-Cow, we can just go ahead, have it after, because everybody will have just seen how it's all come together. They'll have had a few days to read over their resumes and get any feedback. I'm sure the word will get out, who's applied and whatever, and we'll try to get this going, because I hate to have that vacant for much more than a month. I mean, the First Ward is entitled to two representatives, along with everybody else. So, we just want to make sure that that's kind of, is everybody okay with that idea? We'll do it at the J-Cow. So, that way, at that next meeting, which would be on the 13th, they can come in, take their seat, and hit the ground running, and they'll already have a few days in place in the field on the City Council.
You'll swear the minute, council meeting, no worries.
Yeah, yeah. All right. So, we hopefully got that underway. And as I say, Garen will be here next, on the 15th, for the next City Council meeting. All right, moving to item 10, which is another annual event. We have the annual presentation of the Batavia Access Comedy Night and a report on the Christmas toy drive by Mr. Bailey and Mrs. Fletcher.
Mayor and council members?
Go ahead.
Okay. My name is Dottie Fletcher, and I produce the annual comedy show for Access Toys. Hundred percent of the proceeds go to Access Toys. And this year, we're having our event a little bit early because we wanted to accommodate the headliner who wanted to do the show for us. His name is Chili Chalice. He was Jay Leno's head writer for 10 years. And this is the first time that he's been on tour in a long time, because, as you know, Jay Leno retired. So, our show this year will be at the Moose Lodge. They donate their building every year, and we are so grateful for that. It's September 27, Saturday, and it'll be at the Moose Lodge, and the address there is 1532 South Batavia Avenue, for those who don't know where it's at. Tickets are $10 at the door. There are some tickets available at City Hall if you would like to purchase them then. We also, the doors open at 6:30, and the show starts at 8 o'clock. So, from 6:30 to 8 o'clock, we have a silent auction that rocks, and we usually have a 50/50 split, and we have some door prizes for people who come to the show. If you've never seen Chili in person, you may have seen him on TV with Jay. He was the star of Date the Writer Sketch, the little guy carrying the flowers. He's a rockin' comedian, and I'm so happy that he's doing this for us this year. He is bringing a surprise guest with him this year, and I don't even know who it is. So, we'll see what happens with that. But, and I am also proud to say that John Hamel, the owner of Pal Joey's, has partnered with us this year. And between November 1 and the end of the first week of December, if you bring in a new unwrapped toy to Pal Joey's, he will take 10% off your bill. So, you want to talk, Joy?
Okay.
Okay, good.
Good evening, Mayor, and good evening, Council, and I guess good evening, Batavia. It's that time again that we're going to talk a little bit about toys. Rudy and I just left feeding the reindeers, getting them ready to head over here on December 14 to take care of the children here in Batavia. I can't say enough about Dottie putting this whole show together. We've been very successful with this show here in Batavia. What she does is she goes out and she gets all the comedians. She takes care of a place to have the show. And what happens to the money? What happens to the money that's...
I spend it.
What happens is, we go out and we purchase toys. We put toys on layaway. We go out and we start buying toys for Christmas. We don't know the ages, because it's really too soon to even let the city or even the committee know what we need to buy. So, that's really the kickoff, to go out and start purchasing toys, purchasing gift cards and whatever not. So, we really need to make this a success again here in Batavia. Once a Batavian, always a Batavian. I'm looking forward to Batavia stepping up and helping us as they've always helped us through the many years. New slogan in Batavia is, what is it, Rudy?
We are one.
We are one. I mean, that really says a lot about the community, that we are one, because not one time, when my mother was standing here, or when I've been standing here, that Batavia has come together, and we've always come out as number one. Want to keep that focus here in Batavia. Need all of your support to all the people here in town. We've got some problems at the facility, at the church. We're going to work through it. Not going to go through a lot of storytelling about the facility at this point in time, but we've got some setbacks there, and we're going to need some help, not only for toys, but the facility that we have here in town to make sure that we have a place to get the toys out to the children. Any questions?
Any questions, Mr. Mayor?
December 14 is the day.
Yeah, that was, I was just going to ask you, what was the date of distribution?
Second Sunday in December. I'll be back. Thanks.
Forward to seeing you. Okay, moving to item 11, is the Batavia Public Schools 101 Hall of Honor, and I don't see either person that's named in the agenda is here. Bill, did they call and ask for a slot on the agenda? Is that how this came to be?
Were they ever notified they got on it?
Communication wasn't through me.
It was through me, but I, okay, my fault. She emailed me. I guess I thought she was, I didn't know it was coming through me, so we'll just put it up.
Well, we'll get them here next meeting, then.
I will do that. I'll make sure they're here. My apologies.
I don't think it's anybody's fault, per se. It's, you know, it's an interesting idea, so I'm sure that, we've just had some interesting news, so we appreciate more interesting news next meeting, so that's all well and good. Okay, moving to 12, which was the swap on the agenda, which is item F under the consent agenda, which is ordinance 14-50 declaring a 1971 Chevy truck surplus and authorizing its transfer. Who's got this one?
Any questions, Mr. Mayor?
December fourteenth is the day.
Yeah, that was, I was just gonna ask you, what was the date of distribution?
Second Sunday in December. I'll be back. Thanks.
Forward to seeing ya. Okay, moving to item eleven is the Batavia Public Schools one oh one Hall of Honor, and I don't see either person that's named in the agenda is here. Bill, did they call and ask for a slot on the agenda? Is that how this came to be?
Yes.
Were they ever notified that you got on it?
Communication wasn't through me.
It was through me, but I, okay, my fault. She emailed me, I guess I thought she was, I didn't know it was coming through me, so. We'll just put it up.
Well, we'll get them here next meeting, then.
I will do that, make sure they're here. My apologies.
I don't think it's anybody's fault, per se. It's, it's, you know, it's an interesting idea, so I'm sure that, we've just had some interesting news, so we appreciate more interesting news next meeting, so that's, that's all well and good. Okay, moving to twelve, which was the swap on the agenda, which is item F under the consent agenda, which is ordinance fourteen dash fifty declaring a nineteen seventy-one Chevy truck surplus and authorizing its transfer. Who's got this one? Is that anybody?
Alderman Stark is up.
Alderman Stark is up.
This has to do with, uh, the, the city trolley, and this is an intergovernmental agreement for the sale of the trolley, uh, trolley, um, that is converted from a Chevy P thirty pickup truck. And we had some changes to the original amendment, and we move to amend this ordinance fourteen dash fifty by, one, removing the preamble three, two, amending section three to read as follows, "After the date of conveyance, the district hereby agrees to indemnify and hold the city, its employees, officers, and agents harmless against all claims, suits, and liabilities arising out of any occurrences or events associated with the trolley occurring after the date of conveyance," and, three, remove section six in its entirety. And then, I would move that we would pass this ordinance as it's amended.
Second. Move by Alderman Sparks, second Alderman Stark.
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 Of course I have it.
Yeah, right. Second Alderman, Chansett?
Wolf.
Wolf. My hearing's bad on that hearing, I guess. Uh, for the approval of ordinance fourteen dash fifty, any... Kirk call the roll.
Stark?
Aye.
Chansett?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Homan?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Vassiliyan?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Atack?
Aye.
Motion's approved, thirteen yes, no nos. Okay, moving to item number thirteen, which is resolution fourteen dash one oh eight dash R, authorizing execution of contract for the two thousand fourteen street program with J.R. Johnson Paving Company in the amount of one million, two hundred and seventeen thousand, four hundred and eighty-one dollars and four cents. Alderman Wolf, do you have this?
Thank you, Your Honor. This was from J-Cow at the, the last meeting. Karen has the list up on the screen for everybody to see. These are all the streets that are gonna get done. Um, wanna make any comments on it?
No, just, we're sending out notifications to the residents, hopefully, yet this week. We've kinda got that in process. Uh, we have our pre-construction meeting with our contractor next Tuesday, and it's loosely anticipated to start the week after. We have to get our contracts approved, I eyeed out through the end of this week, so everything's set up to get going.
Should get everything done by the end of the month, right, you think?
Completion? No, our contract is through October thirtieth, is the completion date, yeah. October thirtieth with five working days. So, yes, we anticipate everything being done within that timeframe.
Does anybody have any questions? I'll make the motion that, uh, we approve resolution fourteen dash one oh eight dash R.
Second. Move by Alderman Wolf, second Alderman O'Brien, for the approval of resolution fourteen dash one oh eight dash R. Any discussion? Kirk call the roll.
Wolf?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Homan?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Vassiliyan?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Atack?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chansett?
Aye.
Motion's approved, thirteen yes, no nos. Ordinance or resolution is approved. Okay, moving then to item fourteen, which is resolution fourteen dash one thirteen dash R, authorizing execution of an agreement with V Three Companies for Construction Manager as Agent Services for Houston Street Landscaping Project, scheduled for an amount not to exceed three hundred thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars. Alderman Wolf, do you have this?
Thank you, Your Honor, I do. Um, this is for the, uh, construction manager agreement on, uh, Houston Street, and it covers the entire project. I wanna say, um, we went with the eighteen-week construction schedule, is what we came up with, that we wanted to go with, to try to just get it done and over with as quick as possible. Anybody else have any other comments or questions on it?
Maybe we can make mention that the intent would be to have the bid, have the bid documents ready for a very early bid letting, so that construction could start as soon as winter's over, the month of April, per se.
Right, as soon as we can get this done, to try to impact, uh, everything that happens downtown here, as little as possible. I mean, it's gonna be, still be a huge impact, but to try to do it as quickly as possible and as early in the year as possible.
They are construction manager as agent, and so whatever we do construction-wise shouldn't have too big of an effect on what they're gonna overs, over, on their oversight.
Mm-hmm.
So, I, I, I guess I would like another Alderman, maybe, to, to stand with me, so perhaps we can revisit what we're doing on Houston Street. Uh, you know, last council had a design that was a very, I, I felt a very good design, and, and for, for, for reasons, you know, we, this, we, we put that on hold or whatever. It had cost the city more money to, to, to not do what we had originally designed. I'd like to go back to that original design if possible, and, and I say that because I, I truly believe in the importance for our city, the, uh, what, what a streetscape does for our city, as, as again, you know, we, we completed River Street, and River Street is just a, a, a huge success for our city. Wilson Street is a success for our city. I, I wanted to continue with that, and, and that original design on Houston Street was a boulevard effect. I think we're, we're seeing the benefits, that people are coming into our town now. Businesses are coming into our town, people are coming into our town, and, and this is just telling businesses and people that we're gonna continue on. So, I, I would like to revisit that, if, if someone would stand with me and, and maybe make that happen.
I'll make a comment. Mike, I couldn't agree with you more. You and I have had many conversations about this. I would've liked to have seen the original design be the design. I'm not gonna stand with you on this, only because I feel as though, if it were me, and only me, standing with you on this, we'd be wasting a lot of time. Everybody's part. If someone else on the council wishes to stand with you, then I think we would have reason for a good discussion, but if it's just you and I, then I think we're wasting our time.
Sorry.
I, I, you know, I agree with you, but I don't know if I also agree with Dave, so we've hashed that out so many ti, I mean, we hashed it out a second time, even though I didn't want to. So, I don't even know if a third time would be worth everybody's effort. I think it's gonna be a time issue, too. We have to redesign and try to get bids, and I just think it's gotta be what...
Well, that, that...
Gotta be.
That wouldn't be an accurate statement, because the, no, the design was already done. The plans were already done for the original design.
Oh, so we...
They would still have to design the design that we're talking about now, that's been approved to do.
Uh, okay.
So, there's no time wasted. It'd just be us discussing it again. It probably would save the city money.
This is an issue we've discussed and voted on already, with this, this current council.
And I'm happy with the changes we made.
I don't even know what changes we've made.
The primary reason was the amount of parking places we were going to lose by going with the original design, and that's what we all kicked around and kicked around and kicked around, and it was enough parking places, especially in front of the Depot Museum, that, um, our constituents and the people who run the Depot Museum reached out to many of us and said it was just too many parking places to lose.
You just used a lot of qualifiers that many of us and, and most of our constituents, the Depot Museum is open ten hours a week. I mean, and I can appreciate that, you know, but for ten hours a week, we, we, I believe we're making a sacrifice, that, that, sacrificing the benefit of our city, the, the, you know, the good, all the good work that's been done. And I mean no disrespect to, to the Depot Museum, and, and, and the parking, I mean, we discussed the parking, we're gonna lose nine parking spaces, but you, you have that pull-in parking, I mean, no one has said it, engineers across the state have said that, you know, you, you have that, that pull-in parking, and, and it's, it, it causes accidents, it's a danger. I mean, I'm, I'm not hanging my hat on that alone, but, I mean, I just, I just, I feel important enough about it that I have to put forth the argument one more time, and it's not for me, it's for the city of Batavia, I believe. It's, it's for, in the best interest of our city, and that's why I'm putting forth the effort.
One of the other reasons it was brought up for discussion was to try to reduce costs associated with the project, which didn't end up being the case with the new design anyway, so, um, I mean, I, I don't know, that's a tough one, Mike.
Yeah, that, I mean, reducing costs, it cost the city more money to, to change it, and, and it's, it's just not as inviting, it's, it's, it just doesn't go with the, the way we're heading. It's, so, I, I, I'm, I'm saying it to all of you, I, I, we should reconsider.
I think one of the convincing factors for me would be, time has gone on, and we've learned a lot, and I think the track we're on was probably the right track. We've learned that River Street has become a success. We've learned that people are recognizing it as being unique and, and a friendly place that you wanna be. Houston Street, the way the second design is, is, is not unique at all. It's not making it necessarily, it, it is gonna make it more friendly and pedestrian safe than what it is today, but it's not making it unique. The boulevard, we're still gonna have a very wide range of, of asphalt, and, and we were trying to get away from that. We were trying to, um, reduce it in size and make it more pedestrian-friendly and bicycle-friendly.
Which we're not doing any...
Right.
I think the problem with that is, is the use that is around this area. I mean, if you come out here, this weekend was a perfect example of how used that area was, and if we reduce the parking around that area, you know, that's one of the things that I have a problem with. I've been here for thirty years, and, I mean, I have to talk to the police department to confirm it, but I don't remember very many accidents on Houston Street from people backing out of those parking spaces. So, I don't think they're dangerous, and I think it maximizes the use, and people want to park right there to come and be at the area down here, whether they're going to the depot, or whether they're going to any one of the twenty things that happen every week downtown here.
You know, that's funny, 'cause I pulled out of there, and I was like, this is crazy. I can't see who's coming, I'm gonna pull my butt out, you know, my car ends coming out, and hopefully, you know, I won't, 'cause I thought exactly the opposite of what you just did when I was down here this weekend, so...
Well, we're having a lot of discussion, this should be at a committee meeting if we're gonna have the discussion. I appreciate Mike bringing it up.
I will, I will join Mike, um, in asking for further discussion. There seems to be.
I'd just like to point out that it was brought up at the last committee meeting. I'm sorry that you missed it, but Dave, you pointed out correctly at the time, that in order to move forward, we took a vote on it, and you said that we've had the discussion several times again. This council voted for it. This council decided to do it this way. I know that it's not the way you envisioned it, but you have to respect everyone else who has now joined the council and would like a say. We had that say, you had your say, it failed. I'm, I apologize for that. I know you put a lot of work into it, but it changed. And moving forward is what's in the best interest in getting this done, because if we want to reopen it and revisit it, I'm sure there's other things that I might want to see removed from it that didn't get moved the first time. So, you know, do we really want that either? Do we want it done and tied up with everything else that we have done in the past, or do we wanna revisit this, revisit any other issue that we have had, because there are a lot of other decisions that we might have had that any one of us might not agree with, but we accept finality of the vote, we move on? And that's all I have to say about that.
I'm not gonna, you don't need to apologize, please, don't do that. But, uh, the finality of vote, I mean, there was a vote by the previous council, it was passed, and there was no respect for that finality of vote, so I'm just trying to do what I think is the right thing here, and so, with, with no disrespect to, to you or to anyone else who is opposed to it, but, you know, using finality of the vote doesn't, it's not consistent, and so...
It is consistent, because the, the, the council changed, it is a new vote, had it...
Listen, I, I guess what, what we're down to is, I guess we're gonna discuss it, because I had it, I had someone second it, and so, I'm sorry, you're gonna have to discuss it.
The only thing that's out on the table right now is the fact that we have resolution one fourteen, one thirteen, R, out there.
I mean, if we vote this, then they're gonna, you're gonna start designing and building it, I mean, that's what's gonna happen here. I mean, I guess you can continue to have some conversation about it, but we're authorizing the spending of money and going forth with the project, so...
So, the, the vote was, the motion was made and seconded, and we're to the vote? Is that where we are now?
Someone would have to withdraw their motion, then.
I don't have a motion to adjourn.
Okay, well, we do now. There's a motion, make the motion that we approve resolution fourteen dash one thirteen dash R.
Second.
What do we, what do we wanna do with Alderman O'Brien and Chansett's motion? I guess that was a motion, or a request?
No, that was a request.
It was a request.
Dylan Atack.
Is it a re-request for staff to present us options, so we can decide what kinda timeline we'd be on, if we're planning on doing this in the, the budget cycle that we already have it picked for?
I think the only thing you can do is put it, we got two Aldermen that have asked for it to be put on, to have further discussion, so at the next J-Cow, Bill, could you put it on the J-Cow agenda to have further discussion? And I guess at that point in time, we can have the discussion we just had and take a vote, whether or not we wanna see it changed back to the original design.
Well, do you, are we still wanting to vote then on the resolution that's before you, if we just had a motion and seconded?
Well, no, we can still vote.
Yes, because we want the construction manager on board and get that going.
Alan?
No.
We can vote on the contract, we won't serve any workers to get a resolution between the council.
Since the contract is independent of the construction process, of the design.
Okay, then we have a motion.
Point of order. Could I ask a question about the legality of, we took a vote on that, and it is not the next meeting after that, when that vote ever occurred, so can we discuss again something that was already voted upon and not being the next meeting?
That's right, it has to come from somebody on the positive side, and it has to come at the next meeting.
No, that voted yes originally, correct.
You are correct. For a point of order, it's just a discussion item, it's not an item to be voted on. We can talk about whatever we want to, but we probably don't have enough votes for it to pass anyways, so it feels like an exercise in futility to discuss it further. Well, that's gonna be my next thing, is let's just do a strike, hold, and raise hands and see who wants to do it, and we can make that J-Cow meeting a little shorter.
All right, well, the action before us at the moment is fourteen, which is resolution fourteen dash one thirteen dash R, authorizing execution of agreement with V Three Companies for Construction Manager as Agent Services for Houston Street Streetscape Project, scheduling for an amount not to exceed three hundred thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars. It's been moved by Alderman Wolf and seconded by Alderman Stark. So, any further discussion on that one? Kirk call the roll.
Wolf?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Homan?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Vassiliyan?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Atack?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chansett?
Aye.
So, that is approved, thirteen yes, no nos. So, then, is Bill supposed to put this on the agenda for further discussion at the next J-Cow meeting? Is that what you want?
It's Lucy's desire.
Okay. All right, then, moving to item fifteen, which is resolution fourteen dash one twenty dash R, approving a tri-party termination assignment and assumption agreement. John Dillon's memo of eight twenty-six.
Yes, and then there's also a, another one that came out today with some language changes, um, and I don't think it was a dollar amount change. Um, this is, basically, we have one user out there with a cell tower antenna that wants to leave, and we have another one that wants to come in, and originally, they wanted to There's a one-time twenty thousand dollar payment, and then also rent payments that I think we've got figured out now within this resolution. If anybody has any questions? Staff here to answer anything? If not, it's a pretty simple thing, I think it works out in the best interest of everybody involved that we're not tearing something down and then rebuilding it in the same spot. Okay. No questions, and I'll make the motion that we approve Resolution fourteen dash one twenty dash R, approving a tri-party termination, assignment, and assumption agreement between the city of Batavia, U.S. Cellular Operating Company of Chicago LLC, a Delaware Limited Liability Corp. company, and Sprint Comm Incorporated Kansas Corporation as a signee.
Second. Moved by Alderman Wolf. Second by Alderman Callahan for the approval of Resolution fourteen dash one twenty dash R. Any discussion? Kirk call the roll.
Wolf?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Homan?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Vassiliyan?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
A-Tech?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chancet?
Aye.
Motion's approved, thirteen yes, no no's. Motion's approved. Okay, moving to item sixteen, the administrator's report, Mr. McGrath.
Thanks, Mayor. I also wanted to thank John Dillon and Gary for the work they did on that cell tower thing. I hope everyone realizes that without their work, we would certainly continue to get rent payments, but we would never have gotten that twenty thousand dollar payment, so, they worked really hard, I think the companies are used to really kind of working with each other, I wouldn't say to the detriment of the cities, but maybe without regard to the city's position in some of these things, so, it was very helpful for them to do that work. Brush pickup is continuing, the next pickup for the east side is next Monday, September eighth. For the west side, it's Monday, September fifteenth. Your brush has to be out there by seven o'clock on Monday morning. Our brush picker-uppers are very efficient, and once they come by your house, it's going to be very difficult for them to come back, so, I think if you use the weekend to get it out there, it will be the best picture for us. The next other, there will be another pickup in October on both sides of town, and then the last one will be a citywide pickup on December first. Speaking of John Dillon, John's been, of course, head of the water and sewer utility, he's been doing a lot of research on the background of the water utility, which was started in eighteen ninety-three pursuant to a referendum by the citizens, and he's going to be doing a presentation before the Historical Society, and of course, the general public, on Sunday, September twenty-eighth, in these chambers, and anybody is invited to attend that, I think it should be very interesting, he has a lot of pictures that he's dug up, and it's quite a fascinating topic. I also wanted to thank the city employees and all the other volunteers who helped with the block party, it was very successful. And lastly, I don't know how many of the council are aware, but certainly you're familiar with this ice bucket challenge that's been going around to raise money for ALS. The city was challenged a week ago yesterday by the Batavia Park District, and I guess I'll be sending out some messages to try to set up an occasion for those who are interested in the near future to have water dumped over your head. So, that's all I have.
I think they just want staff.
Pardon me?
Didn't they just want staff to do that?
You only had twenty-four hours to go with them. Why would they do that? Well, the staff will be doing it no matter what, I guess we'll just invite you. That's all I have.
Any questions that the city administration? Very good, thank you.
Thanks.
Committee reports, community development, Alderman Brown?
No report, Your Honor, a couple meetings to announce, the plan commission scheduled for tomorrow night has been canceled. The historic preservation meeting scheduled for September eighth, Monday night at five thirty, is scheduled, nothing on the agenda at this point. And then the community, or the committee of a whole, meeting scheduled for September ninth is at seven thirty, the only item CDC has on it is the granting of a non-exclusive assignment of easement for Toll Brothers at the Tanglewood Hills subdivision unit five for the NyCorps easement. That's all I have for the report and for the meetings, but I would like to just say to Rudy and Roy and Dottie, I certainly appreciate everything you guys do, and unfortunately, I told them when I came in tonight, I should have checked their schedule before I made my schedule, I won't be here that night, so, what I'd like to do is, I would like to purchase two tickets, and if you three could put your head together and, and take those two tickets and give them to some deserving person that helps you out with the toy drive, but maybe can't afford to buy the tickets, I'd like to send them.
Thank you, Mayor.
That's all I have.
All right, Public Utilities, Alderman Clark?
Next meeting on the September ninth, there's a couple of public utility items, there's a water and sewer rate study approval, electric rate study approval, a master services agreement with power system engineering, a task order with power system engineering for a transmission line on Fabian and Western, and there's also another task order with power system for Colonial Village overhead rebuild. So, those are the, there's also executive session that night, as always, regarding electric power. So, that's the public utility items for that meeting, otherwise I have nothing else to report, thank you.
Alderman Stark, do you have something under government services?
I do, on the September ninth meeting, government services will be appointing a broker of record for all lines of liability, property casualty, and workman's comp insurance, and then on, at the J-Cow on September sixteenth, we will be talking about the J-Cow process, and that's all I have.
City Services, Alderman Wolf?
Thank you, Your Honor. I see we have a, I think, a holdover from the last meeting, because this is about the execution of the agreement with the V3 companies for Houston Street, which we approved tonight, so probably the only thing we'll have is the discussion on the design on Houston Street on the ninth, and then on September sixteenth, we'll talk about the bridge sculpture. That's all, thank you.
Anybody in the council, anything else they wish to bring up this evening?
Just wanted to let everyone know, football season has started, next week, the football team will be away at Glen Bar North, so if you can't get over to Carol Stream to cheer on it, two oh-and-one teams, this should be an epic game, if last Friday and Saturday night's game wasn't epic enough, this should be, looks to be a really good game.
I've had people ask me over the weekend, which channel are you broadcasting on, ten or seventeen?
Seventeen, and then it's also live on the web at mybatv.com, and it is also on AT&amp;T on channel ninety-nine, on the public access, channel ninety, well, channel ninety-nine, and then you have to pick public access. Not quite as easy to find on AT&amp;T.
So, if you're a Comcast subscriber, seventeen-
Channel seventeen.
Seventeen is for that. I think we even had a call today at the front switchboard, somebody was somewhat, I think they maybe got on the game after it had been postponed or something, and-
Right, that's always fun to try to do that, this is the third game in three years that, or four years that we've had postponed. This one was actually started and then postponed.
Anybody else? All right, we have the executive session, and then we have the mayor's report, would you mind if we do the mayor's report first and get that over with before we go to the executive session? I just got a couple of things I'd just briefly like to talk about. One is, I'd like to publicly commend tonight the, some actions I've seen over this past summer from both the Batavia Police Department and the Batavia Fire Department. We've had, I, what I would describe as a very troublesome summertime this year, specifically with, I guess what I would describe as drug abuse issues in the city of Batavia. And the Batavia Fire Department and Police Department have had an inordinate number of calls this year involving people who have had some type of encounter with drugs in some form or fashion that hasn't gone right. We had an incident over the weekend where we had one that really went bad, we had a couple of our police officers receive minor injuries from it, I mean, there's some, some really kind of bad stuff, and I just, I want to really commend this, our two agencies there. As all of you know, I had a long time relationship with the Batavia Fire Department, and I worked that rescue squad for a number of years in my earlier days as a young gentleman, and, you know, today, one of the most common dispatches you hear on the Batavia Fire Department frequency is, we're dispatching you for a psych, site, what they call a psych evaluation, which is a, somebody that's having some type of apparent mental problem or mental difficulty, and so, when they, they do that, that generally means that they have to also kind of jump companies at the east side station and put the squad in service and take that along with the ambulance, because when you go on those things, you don't necessarily know what you're going to get. And then that also generally means that the Batavia police get brought into the picture, and they, they generally go along. And for whatever reason, this summer, we've just had an inordinate amount of this, and so much of it seems to be, from what I read in the reports, it all goes back to some type of bad inner reaction with drugs, or somebody's having hallucinations or, or something, and we've just had, just a really bad turn on that this year, and I find it very troublesome, but, I mean, it's something that I am pleased to say the Batavia Police and Fire Department repeatedly seem to be rising to the occasion and handling them in very professional manners, and as this incident on Saturday, which I think bordered on some very dangerous moments, they again rose to the occasion and did an outstanding job, so I just wanted to publicly go on record as acknowledging that while not getting into specific details of what happened, they, they really did do, I feel, an outstanding job of bringing to closure some things that could have really gone bad, and, you know, we would have been all over the place with some of the coverage we'd have probably gotten if some of that had gone some different direction. But through the professionalism that those two agencies have shown this summer, I really think we have been, we're in good hands, as they say, and I'm very pleased by that. Next thing I wanted to talk about is, is that, you know, when you run the electric utility, you get a lot of questions about why the lights blinked, or why you, when does this outage happen, and like every, every electric utility, Batavia's had its share, although we continue to have one of the lowest rates in total outages of any utility service in the region. As you may remember, a couple of years ago, in the Sun Times, we were rated the top as far as the number of moments the Batavians were without power in comparison to other communities. The last week or so, our Commonwealth Edison system that intertwined through Batavia, as all of you who are on the council are familiar, we don't directly get our power anymore from Commonwealth Edison, because we are off the national grid, running through the high lines out there on Fermilab, and we just use Commonwealth Edison as kind of our backup service, I guess is probably the best way to describe this. But in the last week, there was a comm ed failure over on McKee Street near Harrison Street, and today, there was one on South River Street, right behind the Tomley Building on the bike trail, to the degree that the line basically blew off those big towers over here that run on the east bank of the Fox River, and it blew the line right off the tower, and the line came down and was laying out there on the bike trail, just to the south of the Wilson Street Bridge. And again, to the credit of our, and there's a lot of value of owning a municipally-owned electric utility, we were there within, I would tell you, two to three minutes, the electric utility responded down, they were able to determine that the wire, when it separated itself from that main grid up there in the sky over the east side business district, it was all Commonwealth Edison, and the line had kind of depressurized itself, and so it de-energized itself, I guess is the word I'm looking for. And so, it was laying there dead, but then the next issue we faced was, is citizens were coming into the parking lot or coming, and here was this big electric line laying down in the parking lot, so people were immediately wanting to call up and ask us, what, do you know that line's down? And it was not our line, but it was the Commonwealth Edison line, I haven't been over there in the last couple of hours, I'm assuming that Commonwealth Edison has taken care of it, but it was kind of a problematic thing for some folks. Fortunately, we did not have any power outages, because it was on the comm ed system, and that's totally separate from ours, and so we didn't have any other issues. So, again, I want to take my hat off to, you know, we, right now, we're having a lot of conversation in this town about the electric utility, and I will just tell you that there is a lot of value to having your own dedicated electric utility in business, in your town, twenty-four hours a day, in service, that you can call them, and they can be there about as quick as any emergency service in many instances, and can get things under control, and when you got a, you know, a high voltage, a high line laying on the ground, sparking and jumping all over the place, people don't really know what to do with it, and I'm glad that we have the ability to kind of be here quickly if we have to have it, so that's one of the true values of us owning our own municipal electric utility. The third thing I wanted to talk about was, is that the staff and myself were somewhat surprised last week when we learned that there was going to be a movement of, at least on a temporary basis, of the Anderson Animal Shelter, which is up in the South Elgin area, is having their building remodeled, and they decided, with the support of Batavia Enterprises, and I will take my hat off to Batavia Enterprises for this, they loaned them the old Swanson Hardware building at no charge to do, move the Anderson Animal Shelter into it on a temporary basis. Now, the staff worked very diligently with them, because quite honestly, this is not really allowed on a permanent basis under our ordinance in the downtown area without a conditional use, and obviously, that wasn't sought. So, they're only going to be there through October twentieth, and I believe the understanding is that the animals have to be moved out of there at nighttime, that you can't keep the animals in the building, that it's, they're trying to get these animals adopted, and I encourage people that would like to adopt a dog or a cat, there are some over on a daily basis now in the Swanson Hardware building, and, and I guess if you'd like to stop in and say hello to the animals or see them, they're there. Interestingly, I was here on Friday afternoon, and I was greeted by three young ladies, very professional and very concerned about what was going on, that they told me they were part of an animal rights coalition, and they were here to look over this facility as far as its ventilation, and where animals were allowed to be walked, and what was happening in that whole exercise, and how secure the building was, and was there alarm systems, et cetera, et cetera. And so, I had a nice little opportunity to talk with these gals, and they told me that they were certainly ready to take some type of public action, should they feel that the animals were not being treated in the proper way that they felt that they should be. They didn't seem to find anything that really bothered them that much, but they were, told me that they had people they reported to, and they would be keeping an eye on it, and they were taking pictures and doing a bunch of stuff. So, you know, I guess, I haven't heard anything from them the last three or four days, but they were here once they heard that this shelter had been set up here, and then we were able to determine that, again, it's very much on a temporary basis, so I wanted all the members of the council, and I think Bill put a brief memo out to all of you about this, that you know what the constraints are on this thing, so if you get questions by some of your constituents about what's going on down there, and again, if you, people do ask yet, I'd encourage you to invite them to come down there and take a look at, there's the animals, because there are both cats and dogs in there, and you can, maybe somebody would like to adopt one, and that's the idea behind it at least, and so, I guess the Anderson Shelter, I guess it's in South Elgin, is under some renovation and repair, and it's going to be supposedly back in full service by the twentieth of October, and so, the dogs and the cats will be leaving us at that point in time, but I guess at night, they are moved someplace else, and so there are not animals in that building overnight, so I am glad to believe. Anybody in the staff know anything contrary to that? So, you all know what's, okay. So, I just wanted to cover that with you all, so you get that, because that's one of those little small ones that all of a sudden gets a lot of people's attention, and especially if you're really a friend of animals, or some people that really have, as I learned a long time ago, very passionate opinions about defending the rights of animals and making sure that they're properly cared for and looked after and whatever, so, as I say, we were, the building over there was looked at from ventilation and walking facilities and all this other stuff, and I guess nobody's said anything to me since they were here on Friday, so I am assuming, and I got the impression from the gals, they were not from town, they were from someplace else in the region and had been told about this and came out here to do the inspection, so, or looked at it at least, I don't know if inspection's the right word, so just so you know what was going on there, so. Alderman Callahan?
Isn't what they're doing kind of similar to where they do the adoptable at like PetSmart, and where they're there for five, six hours for people to show up?
I guess, I guess that's what I'm understanding, and see, there was, there wasn't a lot of pre-announcement to this, and suddenly it just appeared there, and I called and talked to this, and suddenly it just appeared there. And I called and talked to Batavia Enterprises, and they said they were- thought it would be one of the last things they would probably be doing with the building until it got demoed for the new Lawgreen store. But they- it was gonna meet within their schedule, so they- so they donated the building to them at no cost to temporarily house this adoption facility at that location for an interim period of time. And running it by the- our development department, they thought, well, you know, because it was an interim thing, and it wasn't gonna be in any way, shape, or form permanent, that, you know, they would allow it and see where we went with it. So, if anybody's got any questions or objections, please let me know, and we'll try to iron out whatever concerns you may have. But as I say, we've already been visited by the Animal Rights Coalition to let us know that they're keeping an eye on things. And I'm assuming if anything does go askew there, they will be very quickly- they even told me that they knew how to file for a picketing permit in Batavia if they needed to do so. So, I guess that's available online, and they already knew where they could find that if they needed to do it. So.
If I could just make a suggestion, then, for people to go out, and if they're concerned about the animals being there, go adopt the animals. We just- we just adopted one this weekend from Rover Rescue here in town. And so, we have a new family member that was a stray, and there's lots of dogs out there and cats that need to be- need to be brought home.
So, that's what it's all about. I just thought it would be good to bring it up here so everybody in the council could hear firsthand what I knew about it, and you could ask any questions. And again, if people hopefully watch it on TV, or if people have questions, they can- now you know something about it and can answer what's going on there. But as I say, October 20th is what I'm told. They're all gonna be out of there. So. All right. I guess we will move then to executive session. I entertain a motion for executive session for the purposes of purchase and sale of electrical power and litigation. Alderman Clark, you want to make that motion?
I'll move.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Clark, second by Alderman McFadden. Kirk, call the roll.
Clark?
Aye.
Atech?
Aye.